...tactical agenda meeting of February 1st, 2022 to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 22nd, 2021, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 28th, 2021, and the Newark Star Ledger on December 27th, 2021. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcippany.net. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as our Lord.
Hold call please. Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
Mr. Naglia?
Here.
Mr. Musella?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Fred Carr, CFO Juan Uribe, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, and Township Clerk Claude Madden, Council President, we have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, February 15th, 2022, 7:00 a.m., 7:00 p.m., regular meeting. 3:01, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., Agenda Meeting. Presentations and reports, Mayor, you're up first.
Yes, um, just, um, I haven't reported on the COVID activity. So tonight, um, I'm gonna start from Wednesday, Tuesday of last week. On the 25th, we had 42 cases of COVID, on the 26th, 48, on the 27th, 45, and on the 28th, 28, and the 29th, 16, and the 30th, 16. As you can see, the amount of cases of COVID are starting to decrease, and as the state said, and all the CDC say that it will start probably tapering off in mid-February and stuff like that, so that's, that's an update there.
Do you know how many of them were hospitalized?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
That'd be a good...
All right, I'll get that.
Well, if, if there are hospitalizations, those are reported. Those are just by the Department of Health. So if somebody is actually in the hospital, we're told. So those are just positives.
With regards to TNR, trap, noon, and release, I met with the Business Administrator, Health Officer, and the Animal Control Officer, and after, you know, a lot of detailed discussion, one thing we cannot allow to continue to happen, and this is just my opinion, is to have our residents be affected the way they're being affected over in the Interville area. Um, you know, I'm gonna make a recommendation with regards to TNR, that we form that committee that was discussed, we form it, we find a way to amend this TNR so it doesn't affect the residents in that area. It's, you know, I think it's 42 to 50 cats in a certain area, and it becomes a health hazard for those residents. And it's something that we can't allow, I just can't allow. I just, I don't understand why it hasn't been tackled already, but I'm willing to take it on, and Council President, if you want to start that committee, we can discuss how we can amend it and still have the trap, noon, and release program here in Parcipony, which I understand, that's not an issue for me, but I do have an issue when they start to invade private property.
Well, trap, noon, and release is a long-term program. So that's not the program that you're talking about. You're talking about creating some different program, and we can, we can discuss that, but TNR is a long-term program.
And I understand that, but what I will say is, as long-term as it is, I know that if I lived in that area, I don't want that long-term project affecting my neighborhood, affecting my property, affecting my children, affecting the fact that they can't go out into their backyards. You know, we have a responsibility for public safety as well. Um, I'm not saying get rid of trap, noon, and release, that's the last thing I'm trying to say. We have to find another method where we don't put the onus on residents to maintain the trap, noon, and release, because you see what's happening, they cannot maintain it. And when you can't maintain it, it starts to affect that area, and as I've heard the residents speak many times, feces all over the backyard, that becomes a public health situation in the neighborhood. Now, I don't know whose fault it is, I understand the trap, noon, and release program, but if you can't maintain it and you can't take care of, take care of them, then we have to find another way to take care of it. So I would recommend, and of course, that's up to you, Council President, but form a committee, we discuss it, we find a, we find a solution to the problem.
Okay.
Thank you. And that's it for me tonight.
Okay. Township, under Township Council, we have presentation. We have General Manager at the Knoll, Kevin Bracato, and I think that first row of lights should be turned out. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Bracato, I'm the General Manager at the Knoll. I have a couple of things to say before I start my slide presentation, which is thankfully gonna be brief. When I first had the opportunity to get the job at the Knoll, Knoll was in pretty desperate straits. Uh, I was a member of the Advisory Committee, starting in 2014. In 2018, the Township hired a for-profit company to manage the Knoll. Uh, the Advisory Committee started coming to the Council because the conditions up there got so bad, membership-wise, we were losing members, the golf course was in terrible shape, uh, just overall, there were no programs, they didn't have a golf professional, you know, they took over in March, I believe, of 2018, they didn't have a golf professional on site until the end of the season in 2018, and then starting out 2019, it was, it was abysmal. What happened as a result of that was, uh, I ended up approaching the Mayor with Councilman DePiero's help, and we had a discussion about what do we do? Because that, that company was contracted to be here until the middle of the 2020 season. Had they been kept, the fact of the matter is, we would have really been in desperate trouble at the Knoll. Further into my presentation, you'll see the numbers and what I was talking about. At the time, we had no idea, absolutely no idea, how bad it was at Knoll. Only after I got in there and started to work on creating procedures and accountability and looking at the finances of the Knoll, did, did we truly realize how bad the situation was. And fortunately, we've been successful, as I'll show you later on, in turning everything around. Recently, there's been three articles posted and tap into Parcipony. Those articles are factually incorrect, and that's what prompted me to ask for the time in front of you, to straighten out the facts and let you know exactly what happened. Part of when I came in was to look at what was going on, look at our sales, look at the accountability. We found out that there were people coming into the, into the pro shop, saying, "I am an employee of the town," and wanting a special rate to go play golf. I discovered that was a process that had been in place up there for quite some time, have no idea how long. Uh, I've been a member there since 1993, I was on the Advisory Committee in 2014. How long members were playing or employees were playing, simply by coming in and saying, "I'm an employee," I have no idea. So we said, okay, we have to make sure these people are actually employees. We started asking for their ID card, "Show me your township ID." And they would, they would say, okay, some of them would say, "Well, I don't have it, I left it at home," "Charge me the non-resident rate." Others would say, "I'll go get it out of my car, it's in my car," and then never come back. So we decided that we had to make this, the employee playing transparent. We had to be able to track it, we had to know who was playing, we had to know when they were playing, we had to know what they were paying us. The only way I could do that was I had to assign a membership number to the employee category so we could get them into the computer system. And that's quite as simple as it was, it wasn't a free membership, they were already paying, we just wanted to make it accountable. So by establishing that and then putting it into the ordinance, and I did the rate ordinance, and I can tell you, nobody was involved in that decision and, and trying to codify it and justify it, other than myself and Fred Carr. Fred's my boss. When we saw the situation was going on, I called him. We had a conversation about it, we decided we were on the right track, let's, let's make it a bug board, let's make it trackable, and let's get it into the ordinance. So quite simply, that's all we were trying to do, and there was nobody involved in that except for myself, my staff, and Fred Carr. Now, when I came to the Knoll, one of the things we did was, we hired the golf professional. Prior to that, golf professional was a contractor, who was being paid by the town, made all the profit on the pro shop, made all the profit on lessons that were being taught, and we made nothing. All he did for us was quite simply handle outings and make sure tee times got booked. When, when we came aboard, after the two years with Kemper, we hired John McCarthy, who was there, he was their golf, ended up being their golf professional, I think he was the third one they had in there. But John has 25 years of experience in, at private golf clubs. So to get the membership involved and start programs, which, which we did, we started junior golf, we have junior clinics, we had a junior summer camp, we started the PGA Junior League, we also started an evening nine-hole ladies league at the West. We have an 18-hole ladies league that plays during the daytime. So the programs and the, and the tournaments and, you know, creating our future with the junior golf is, is a big push, and I think he's done a fine job with that. As far as our staff with the green staff, thankfully, the Township invested $2 million in the new sprinkler system up there. Prior to this, this new sprinkler system, the sprinklers ran right down the center of the fairways. So if you had to irrigate the rough areas, you had to overwater certain parts of the golf course. The new irrigation system is got, we had 360 sprinkler heads on the old system, the new system has 1,600 heads. Every one of those heads is GPS, none of them lie right down the middle of the fairway. They're staggered all over the golf course so that you can water, like, if, if the rough on the right side, the number 18, needs water, we water that spot. You don't have to turn on the whole sprinkler system to water one spot. So the conditions of the course, along with the staff that we hired, we replaced on the green staff, six people this year. Every single one of them is, is, we hired, actually hired two of them full-time, we had six people that we hired as seasonals. They all have experience at Nickerbocker Country Club or Mount Paver Country Club for years. And one guy we, we hired is 30, 30 years' experience at a private golf club in, in Bergen County. So rather than hire some kid to come in and cut the grass, some high school kid, we have to watch, they're, they're screwing around, they don't understand how to maintain a golf course, we hired these, these people. Our intention is not to, and we did that without increasing the staff. So the, the staff was 15 people, 16 people, we're still right about 16 people. When Glenn Purcell went into the Knoll, that staff was 29 people. So we're maintaining and actually doing a much better job with the combination of the staff that we hired and the sprinkler system. Our results will show that to you. The, 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 in 2020, in 2018 and 19, the membership was shrinking. In 2020, halfway through the season, we sold out, and we ended up the season with 118 people on a waiting list. This is for the west course. Today, we have 206 people on the waiting list. As of tonight, before I came here, we have 620 members already paid and, and signed up for next year, and we're not even halfway through our waiting list. So we'll sell out again this year, and our goal is to get as many of those people in as members as we possibly can. That waiting list is due to the, uh, due to the conditions of the golf course and the promise of what we will be offering with food and beverage up there, hopefully soon. So with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, obviously, that's the Knoll before we, before we started our reconstruction, those green turrets are now black, all those windows on the corner of the building are, are gone. We had leaks in the building that went back to flashings that were not properly done for years, we had mold issue. That's what started the reconstruction up there. And the reason that we did not get building permits when we started was because it was like peeling an onion. You started with a black spot on the wall, and then when you, you went to fix the black spot on the wall, it was obviously mold, you pulled it apart, we found out how bad the mold was, and you, you just kept going. At the point in time that it became obvious to us that we should ask for permits, we were told to stand down and don't do it, just finish the job. And that was the old Business Administrator that, that told me to do that. I'm not making an excuse, it's just the reality, that's what it was. So this past year, you know, everybody thinks that the Knoll is a private golf club, anything but. Both courses, the east and the west, are public golf courses. Last year, we had a combined total of 59,650 rounds. Of that total, 20,600 and some were general public, and that's between golf outings, that's between what we sold to the public on golf. Now, it's also people that would call up and say, "Do I have a tee time?" Our, our, I'll explain the membership system, but we had 38,000 rounds that were played by members of both the east and the west course. Combined, between the two courses, we had over 1,500 members. 800 and something down at the east and almost 690, I think, up at the west. Of that, those 38,000 rounds, 287 were played by employees. Those rounds were only played when we had nobody playing golf. So if we hadn't sold those rounds to those, those employees, we would have lost revenue. We gained almost $15,000 in revenue just from the employee rounds. And you know what, it, it's, as far as I'm concerned, as, as running the Knoll, if you guys choose to keep the employees, great, if you don't, that's fine. The ordinance is a township ordinance, it's your purview. The only reason I put it in, again, was to make it transparent. I didn't want anybody to be able to come back and say, "Why are these people playing golf without being members?" It's not in the ordinance. Well, now it's in the ordinance. That's what we're asking you to do. If you don't, if you choose to vote it down and not do it, it's okay with me. It, it's not gonna, $14,000 isn't gonna make or break the business we have going at the Knoll at this stage of the game. So of our current membership, and this is, this is true as of tonight, 47% of our new members at the West are residents. So 53%, more than half, are non-residents that, that choose to join the Knoll. Our membership classifications, I don't think there's a great deal of understanding, and that's why I choose to explain this. Membership at both courses, the categories break down to resident and non-resident. At the east course, it's only general public, there's no preordained, uh, tee times in advance or anything, it's first come, first served. A resident member pays $50 fee, he gets a reduced green fee. A non-resident member pays a $150 fee, he gets the same reduced green fee. The general public comes in, they don't get the reduction, they pay the higher rate to play that golf course. At the, at the West, we have, it's the same deal, resident, non-resident, it's always open to the public. If we have an open tee time that isn't being used by a member of some kind, we'll sell it to anybody that walks in the door. And our rates in the rate ordinance reflect that. For instance, I think, I think the non-resident rate during the week is on the order of $85 plus tax for the cart. For a general member, and this would be any class of member, it would be $53, I think, with tax on the cart. So, uh, that's it, you got two classes. There's three categories at the West. At the east, there's only the two categories, resident, non-resident. At the West, we have three categories, and those all fall under Class A. So a Class A member can book his tee time 12 days in advance. They all get the same reduced green fee, every member. The membership classes are individual, resident, and non-resident, you can see the difference in the rates, family, and a family would include two members, a husband, a wife, and a child under 18 or a grandchild under 18. Those memberships are generally used on the weekends and the afternoons where, you know, somebody wants to take their grandson out to play golf, or he wants to go play with his wife. And then we have corporate. Now, the rates you see for corporate are per person. So a township corporation would pay us $1,020, $1,030, a non-tauntship business would pay us $2,030 per member, and it's a minimum of two members in a corporation. So one guy can't come in and say, "You know, I own the barber shop, I want a corporate rate." Doesn't happen. Our Class B members, they can book times at seven days in advance, get the same reduced green fees, and it's only individuals, resident, non-resident, there's no additional classes. After seven days, at five days, we open the membership up to the general public, or the tee times up to the general public. So that's when we'll put tee times up on Golf Now, people can call if we have a time available, they're, they're more than welcome to pay. The general public pays $85, $86, $87, Golf Now pays us $90. So those are the highest rates we charge for green fees. Employees, they have to reapply for their membership every single year. So we are not gonna allow retirees, because people were coming in and saying, "I work for the town," and they retired for 10 years, not gonna happen anymore. The, uh, guy left the township in the middle of the year, and he comes back next year and says, "I'm an employee member, well, show me your ID." And then we will check to see if they actually are still employees before we allow them to have that, that privilege. They can book their times four days in advance, so they'll last on the pecking order. You wanna get the discount, you have to wait until it's offered to the members, the two membership classes, and the general public before they can play golf. So, uh, my bottom statement there is that the, the green fee is the same. There are differences that you'll see in the ordinance on the green fees, based on the day of the week, so weekdays are less expensive than weekends and holidays. The time of the day, if it's 3:30 in the afternoon, that's when we start Twilight, it'll be a reduced rate. There also are rates for nine holes that can be played after, late in the afternoon after Twilight starts. We run, we run eight-minute tee times at the West. Now, the east is, is a different animal, but the West, we run eight-minute tee times. That means we do seven and a half tee times per hour. You take that times an eight-hour day, that's like 400 tee times for the day. There's no way we'll ever sell 400 tee times. If we're, God bless, if we're that sold out, I, I'll be asking to pull the new golf course. We probably average on busy days somewhere in the neighborhood 200 to 220 rounds of golf. So in the afternoons and in the off times, those times are wasted, and they don't get sold. If a time doesn't get sell, sold, now that eight minutes is for golfers. So, you know, if, if you're talking about four members, you're talking about a couple of hundred hours every eight minutes that we sell a tee time. If we don't sell it, our cost that hour goes up. So the more tee times we sell incrementally, the lower our cost to operate the businesses. So, now into the fiscal analysis, if you go back to 2001, and I supplied you all with a spreadsheet, that shows, uh, the, the numbers I had were sales for golf, where our catering revenue was, I didn't have cost numbers that go back beyond 2016. But if you looked at the sheet, we started out at roughly $336,000 a year in revenue from the caterer. That grew to $1.3 million in 2011. That's a 265% growth rate. From 2011 to 2021, and there is a graph I'll show you later on, that will show you the decline in the revenue from the caterer. Now, that became, and, and when I was on the Advisory Committee, we didn't get a lot of these numbers. These numbers have really not been shared generally with any of us, they were pretty well held close to the vest. All we were told is that we're in trouble because the, the revenue from the catering was going down. The catering is subsidizing the golf at the Knoll. Those were statements that were made, and there are members on the Advisory Committee that are here can back that up. So, anyway, in 2016, the, the golf generated $116,000 in profit. Overall, we saw a profit of $776,000 of the utility, had included a catering revenue of $660,000, which was, the decline had started back in 2011. In 2016, we were down to 660,000. In 2017, oh crap, I can't read that. In 2017, we realized a loss on golf of $56,717. Overall, the utility had a profit of $353,000, which included catering revenue of $410,000. So it went from 660 in '16 to 410 in '17. 2018 is when the management company came in, that's when Kemper Sports was hired. Golf realized a loss of $56,737. Overall, the utility had a profit of $353,000, which included catering revenue of $410,000. I'm sorry, I misspoke. 2018 is when Kemper started. 2018, golf lost $356,000. Utility had an overall loss of $149,000, which included a positive revenue from the caterer of $210,000. So you could see how the revenue from the caterer was dropping, and the losses with the mismanagement that was going on were pretty, pretty steep. In 2018, I'm sorry, uh, can you hit my button for me? Please, just anyone, any, any of the, no, the other way.
Try, try another eight-one.
One more. There you go. 2019, the golf lost $514,000. Utility showed an overall loss of $154,000 because we had revenue from catering of $316,000. The total loss to the utility, though, was $737,000 because 500, uh, 400, what the, $582,000 was moved out of our insurance allocations. So in the general fund, we have an insurance allocation that we pay based on a percentage, I don't know what it is, but that number generally runs in the $500,000 area. In the two years Kemper Sports was here, that, that bottom line went from 500 and some thousand dollars to 60, 63, 64 hundred dollars in one year, and, and 72 hundred dollars in the other year. in one year and, and seventy-two hundred dollars in the other year. So, two thousand and twenty, that's when we hired the, 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 uh, that's when I came aboard, that's when we hired the, the, uh, the golf staff to work for the township. In two thousand and twenty, we realized the profit on golf alone of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Overall, we had a profit of a million twenty thousand dollars, and that included two hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from the caterer. When you replaced, we, we actually replaced five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars into the general fund for our insurances. That meant our profit, the profit increase was one point five million dollars in two thousand and twenty. In two thousand and twenty-one, we had no revenue from the caterer because we didn't have one. We generated nine hundred and two thousand dollars in, in profit on golf alone. We also paid two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the old caterer to buy out the equipment. The equipment that was there was shared. Some of it was owned by the township, some of it was owned by the caterer. It was a constant bone of contention. Who owns it? Who's got to fix it? Who's maintaining it? What happens if we get rid of the caterer? Do we have to go buy convection ovens and stuff like that? So in, in conversations with Fred, we chose to buy it out. Of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty thousand of it is a deposit that the caterer paid us with the initial contract. So really, for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we bought out the caterer. The reality is, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars came out of our, out of our proceeds in two thousand and twenty-one. So that nine hundred and two thousand dollars should have been over a million dollars. Now, if that doesn't prove anything, other than the fact that the golf does not need to be subsidized by anything. The golf makes money and stands on its own. We don't need the caterer to make our money. The caterer should strictly be considered an enhancement to our profitability. Now, where that money goes, hopefully, it's going to be reinvested back into the utility uh, so that we can keep improving the facilities, uh, and hopefully, get a caterer that is making money, because if they're making money, we're going to make money. So, and you know what? Everybody says the pandemic has an awful lot to do with it. And that's true. It had a lot to do with our increase. It doesn't account for those numbers up there. We are gaining members that are coming to us from private clubs. Rockaway River, uh, Greenbrook, uh, private clubs that are assessing their members. They're paying ten and twenty thousand dollars a year to join those clubs and they're being cessed for greens. They have a food and beverage minimum that they have to pay every month. It gets very expensive. When a guy outside this area looks at paying us eighteen hundred or two thousand dollars for a membership and he pays for his golf as he goes and they see what we're planning for the improvements in the grill room, which is going to become a restaurant, they want to be here because we're giving them the same amenities you would get in a private club without the expense. It's the best deal in the state, believe me. So these, these two simply show you, these bar graphs, simply show you the, the golf revenues uh, over the course of, of the last twenty years. The, the, the graph on the right is your catering revenue. So you can see how it peaks and it comes down. All right, in closing, I believe that this factually reports what is really going on up at the Knoll. You know, everybody likes to say the Knoll is a gem. It truly is. We're polishing it up. We get it finished, it really is going to be a gem. Uh, for many years, like I said, for many years, the word was the Knoll is subsidized by the catering. Believe me, that's no longer true. Whether I'm there or somebody else is there, this thing will continue because we now have processes and accountability in place. Some of the things that went on there in the past will never happen again, unless somebody allows it to get out of hand. And as long as I'm there, I can guarantee you that's not going to happen. Uh, I'm just asking that the funds that we are generating in the future be reinvested. You know, in the, the last couple of contracts with the caterer, we had clauses in there that said we were going to do, I don't know, twelve million, seventeen million dollars in improvements. We spent money on architects, we spent money on engineers, we never made the investment in improving the facilities. The caterer is a businessman. Any catering facility that you guys are familiar with, they redo their places once every five to seven years. The ballrooms, new rugs, new whatever. We haven't done anything inside the Knoll in thirty years, since it was built. The rugs have never been replaced, they, they smell. Uh, caterer is going to try and sell weddings in a venue like that. We have to make those kind of investments. Now, I'm not suggesting that we have to make eight, ten, twelve million dollars investments in there because we don't. All right, I think with investments of a couple of hundred thousand dollars in each place, uh, raise the ceiling, replace the rugs, put in hard floors which are easier to maintain, that's, that's what you're talking about up there. Uh, I think the analysis that I'm showing you proves that, uh, our financial performance at, at, at the, is, is the utility. It, it doesn't sub, it doesn't need subsidization. It's going to need, the, the revenue from the catering is going to enhance our, our profitability up there. Um, so at that point, it's, it's imperative. We got to get the contract, uh, in place for the caterer. Met with the mayor yesterday, we're working on that. We're trying to speed that up as much as we can because we're approaching the beginning of the season. And another season without having food and beverage could be a real disaster for us. We also are working very hard on, on getting finished with what the building department is requiring. And, uh, you know, prior to, uh, the mayor coming in, we got no communication back from the, the building department. So we were just hanging, not knowing what they required, what they wanted to be able to finish the process of giving us the permits. Since the mayor came in, we have that communication. And we're down to one final, uh, permit for hanging fire, uh, signs and stuff like that, which was submitted to them today. So at this point, from what I've been told, there should be nothing holding up the building permit process. So with that, I thank you. And, uh, really, any questions that you might have, I'm, I'm listening.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Let me just summarize, uh, from a more global, some of those numbers we had lost. Can't remember all those numbers. Um, back in the early nineteen seventies, when the township purchased the Knoll Country Club, Green Acres paid for half of the funds that were used to purchase the Knoll. Now, anytime the state gives you money, they always have strings attached. And the string in this case was, it, it, since all of the Green Acres money comes from all of the taxpayers in New Jersey, you cannot bar anyone in New Jersey from playing at the Knoll, east or west. So anybody can come and play. Now, we have a pecking order. The A members at the west are paying the most and they can reserve their tee times on the east or west twelve days before the, the tee time that they need on either course. The Bs who pay, the B members who pay less, um, can now reserve their tee times that were not taken by the As and at the east and, and the west. Now, um, in general, anybody in the state of New Jersey can take up any other tee time that's not taken from the As and the Bs. But, but many decades ago, the township considered, well, our volunteers, whether it be the fire, the EMTs, the ambulance, R and R, um, or township employees uh, who work to improve our quality of life in Parsippany should have a higher pecking order than everybody else in the state of New Jersey that does nothing for the, for the town of Parsippany. So there was like a third category. We allowed the volunteers, um, and, and the employees, um, to reserve tee times four days before the tee time that they want. That's after the As reserve theirs and the B reserve theirs. Then the volunteers and the employees four days before can reserve open spots that are still there. Uh, and then after that, if there are still open spots, and they, there always are, anybody from the state of New Jersey can come in and play at the east or the west and, and, and fill in those. But, but we wanted to give a higher preference to volunteers and township employees over the general public in the state of New Jersey who don't contribute anything to our quality of life in Parsippany. Give them a higher grade. That's all we've been doing. Nobody's played free, everybody is played all the time. Um, there's no free giveaways. Um, it, it's unfortunate that the one term that Kevin put in there that, that, uh, the, the volunteers and the employees, um, their, their membership fee is waived is, is not a good term. That, that misled some of the members on the council at, at that time um, because it's not waived. The men, their membership is not waived and all the state, state residents who want to play there, their membership is not waived either. They don't have to, they don't have to apply for membership.
Twenty thousand rounds last year. So.
The general public.
Yeah, and they pay a higher rate, but they can play.
Yes, sir.
We just wanted to give a little higher pecking order for our volunteers and our town employees over those other, those others. That's all it was, that's, that's all. When, when Kevin tried to memorialize what we've been doing for decades, many decades, um, it was, it was just trying to memorialize what we've already been doing.
No, I, I'd also like to tell you that the, uh, articles, uh, that were printed and tapped at the Parsippany, not one person made a phone call to myself or the administration to verify the facts before those articles were printed. There also was, what I would consider to be confidential information that I supplied to Fred Carr on the twentieth of January that were in the, quoted in the paper or the, the internet on January twenty-third. So how that information got into the, tapped into hands, I have no idea. I don't think it's right.
No, in fact, I, I received complaints, that memo included the names of town employees who were playing at the Knoll.
That's correct. And that's, that's, you know what? Excuse me, that's, that's the accountability and the level of accountability that we created. I was asked for that information and I think within, how, how long? Three hours we had the information disseminated? And there were only thirty-seven, uh, employee members. And of that thirty-seven, seventeen of them never even played a round of golf. Only twenty people. And one guy, who was the golf coach at Parsippany, uh, High School, played a hundred and twenty-three rounds. He's a teacher, he's the golf coach. He sometimes would play two rounds a day. He would come up as a single and if we had a threesome going out, he'd fill in on that group. So that, that would have been a, a, a green fee that we would not have had because the threesome would have been allowed to go out with only three golfers. So that's as simple as it was and as well-intended as it was. How it got distorted, why it got distorted, if it has to do with my wording in, in the, I apologize. That, that was not the intent. The only intent was to make them accountable and to get it on the record, get it into the, uh, ordinance so that nobody could come back at me and, and say, why are these people playing golf without, that's why. And as I said before, it's your ordinance. If you want to keep it in there, fine. If you don't want to keep it in there, fine. You want to modify it, fine, we'll do whatever the ordinance says. I just wanted to codify it and make it transparent.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on with the agenda, we're down to Township Attorney.
Uh, yeah, the only report I have, Council President, is that I'm getting a pretty good handle on all the issues in Parsippany right now. I have a follow-up meeting with my predecessor on Friday and, uh, I think I'll have more detailed reports going forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Business Administrator?
No, no reports, sir.
Township Clerk?
Uh, no report at this time, thank you.
Township Committees, reports?
Yes, um, we'd like to welcome, our township would like to welcome a new business in town, Platter King. And we will have a, uh, economic development, development committee will have a ribbon cutting and plaque presentation on Saturday, February the fifth, at eleven o'clock. And we wish Platter King the very best of luck as a new Parsippany business in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a report?
Uh, Mr. Council President, I'll be meeting with the Environmental Advisory Committee on February ninth.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, I had two committee meetings, one, uh, with the library. And, uh, it was a good meeting. I learned a few things about what's going on. I know there's some HVAC problems that, um, Mr. Carr is working with them on and, uh, there's some other things that they mentioned regarding benefits that I'm sure they're going to reach out to the town and talk about. And in addition to that, I also met with the, uh, Board of Ed as a liaison and I gave a small report based on our last council, um, agenda, just informing them about some of the things happening in town, A roadways that were being worked on and things of that nature so that, uh, they were informed, uh, you know, if they had to reroute any bus routes or anything like that. That went very well.
Okay, thank you. And if we're going to report meetings, um, I'm liaison to the Traffic Advisory Committee and they will be meeting on March seventeenth. Their first meeting since the pandemic at the library. Um, and, uh, since the library closes at eight o'clock and we're meeting at seven, they're going to be very brief meetings. All right, engineering report, uh, we'll read at our, I assume it's going to be the same in two weeks.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, Council President.
We'll read it at our regular meeting. Bids to be taken. Two twenty-two, twenty-two, pump station number four, gravity conversion project. Two ten twenty-two, rental of heavy equipment. And that's it. Now I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Second.
Motion.
Motion made by, uh, Mr. Musella.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Who made the motion?
Councilman Precious, seconded.
Okay, so motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Gugnani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public on any matter. You have five minutes to speak.
Hi, I just wanted to thank everybody for the, uh, I'm sorry, Steve Colentoni, forty-five Farron Drive. Um, just wanted to talk on the golf thing real quick. I just want to thank Mike for thinking of volunteers, uh, you know, Anthony Cordasco is here, he's going to speak as well, uh, for the employee, um, membership, you know, that the volunteers get in under. Uh, it allowed me this year to, or past year, to kind of get back into golf and spend some time with my kids, so I really appreciate it. So my only, uh, request would be is that if we're not going to, the ordinance is not going to get voted and, and the employees now have to switch to a class A or a class B membership, that we get put ahead of, on the top of the waitlist. There is a waitlist right now. Um, so if we, or we're not subject to the waitlist, if we could do something like that. So if we have to start paying, you know, to go up to a class A or a class B membership, we're fine with that, or else I'm fine with that. Um, just if we could be put to the top of the waitlist, that would be great. That's all.
Well, it's going to depend on the council vote, but.
Yeah.
I don't think we're going to come to that.
Okay.
I think, I think, um, most of the council members now realize that, uh, what we're doing for, uh, volunteers and, and employees is just giving them a better pecking order than the general public.
Right, right.
Um, and not requiring the pay for A and B membership.
Right.
The other thing is, you can't pick the spots that As and Bs already picked.
Right, right.
It's whatever is, whatever is left.
But I understand there's a fiscal part of it and that's, I understand that. So, you know, my only request would be is if, if it doesn't go, then that's fine. If we could just, you know, be waived off the waiting list and therefore, as you point out, you know, we, we're here to improve the quality of life within the town and that's a nice little payback, um, not payback, but bad choice of words for it. But, uh, you know, just something for us to, to be, you know, ahead of.
If a large event happened in town, we were playing golf, we, Chief and I would both throw our clubs back in the bag and we're going to go and jump on a truck and do what we need to do. If we're in Rockaway Township or if we're down shore, we're not going to be able to do that, right? So that also helps us, help you by being here and, you know, being able to take part in the services that the town has to offer. So we really appreciate it. We wanted you just to consider that if you were to abolish that employee discount piece of it, Michael, I hope it doesn't happen, that we would at least be able to rise above the waitlist and have at least the ability to pay for our own membership.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anthony, oh, okay.
Does that include citizen advisory boards? Oh, yeah, Nancy Snyder, two twenty-six North Beverly Road. Does that include citizen advisory committees? Does that include planning board? Does that include zoning board?
No, not citizen advisory.
They're volunteers? They're volunteers. So, you know, this pecking order is insulting. Listen, I love our volunteers and I love our township employees. Businesses are shuttering. Families and kids are on food lines. We're emerging from a pandemic. This mayor has to deal with a blank load of four years of mismanagement, and we can't afford waiving fees. I voted for every one of you. And while I think it's unreasonable to hold everybody verbatim on the political rhetoric that you all give us in regards to advocating for taxpayers and, you know, protecting the taxpayers, we cannot afford this. I found it interesting that the Director of the Knoll tonight said that memberships at the Knoll are mostly non-residents. Yeah, I get it, because the majority of Parsippany residents can't afford a membership of their own, let alone allowing the municipality to codify a fifty-year practice of basically misappropriating funds. If we could afford it, we would.
Those are your words, not ours.
Well, yeah, absolutely. It's my words. I'll stand by my words. And frankly, I think you're living in a bubble. What world, what world is it sane to just pay, waive fees? Now, you're saying nobody's getting anything for free. Are you paying, you're part of the Knoll, aren't you? You're part of the Knoll. Do you pay an annual membership fee?
I do.
Okay. So as long as he's paying for one and others are not, and again, there's a pecking order, and not all volunteers are treated equally as based on your testimony and the Director's testimony. So, you know, I find that highly insulting. And listen, I don't know why we're, you know, we're even wasting our time with this. He's got some serious fiscal issues that we really need to buckle down on. And even by the Director's, you know, the Director's own testimony here, you know, the years of bleeding money, gross historical mismanagement, get it, moldy conditions, leaking infrastructure. And then, and then let's not talk about the number of trees that are being culled back there, while residents are on a, like a one hundred sixty-five to one hundred eighty-person waiting list just to get a dead tree that puts their life, property, and health at risk of coming down during a major storm. But yet, the trees are like coming down like wild over at their golf course there, both at west and east. So again, I really ask you to, you know, consider this, not codifying this. I'm sorry, we do, like, you know, we love the work that they do, but I find it really ironic that it's only a few chosen volunteers and not everybody who volunteers. Thank you.
Nicholas Homiak, White High Rother. Not for anything, but make an old brief. I wonder what Irene and Sandy, because it rains all the time, you could sing in the rain, but you can't golf. So I wonder, you know, just things like that factor into some of these equations. But it is a good place, like I said, and I hope it gets better for everybody. It's a public utility. I'm here because one of the jobs, no matter who the mayor, I believe, the most important job, I think, is to make sure his employees are doing the job, the best job possible for the municipality. And in addition, anyone who enters this town to do any kind of work to respect the community. So we had these utility guys stringing cable, I guess they're from Optimum. Just take a look at that, and I gave Mr. Carr some, multiply that hundreds of times throughout the town. There weren't, no bucket, they came down my street, saying, how come this guy doesn't have a bucket? He's tossing it in the street, tossing it in the street. How was this issue resolved? Or can, in the past, JCPN was in this town, they were dumping mercury light bulbs down by the Knoll in the woods. So these contractors, subcontractors, whatever you want to call them, they get hired, they're organized labor force, they have no accountability, no discipline, and they're probably doing it all over, not just in Parsippany. But how is the issue resolved? How is Optimum going to make up for being a step up from a litter bug in this town, throwing their debris, cable, metal, plastic, all over the town? There's no excuse for something like that. They need to come here, maybe see the mayor before they start to work. And maybe the mayor and the town administrator should make sure that they have everything possible and get a basic instruction on how to conduct themselves when they're in someone else's community.
What else? Oh, yeah, I have a question. How much did we pay in 2021 for our tipping fees for our sanitation, for our garbage? Because I'm, I got my brain thinking about something, about how there might be another unfairness toward people who generate less garbage and people who generate more garbage and don't recycle. Like, how much, what was our tipping fees? And were they offset in any way by source separation, like anything from all the crap that we produce for recycling? Or was anybody ever fined in this town or anywhere anymore for not obeying the source separation rules? Because we have an inspector, we should be, maybe we need a mayor to go like in an army jeep, go around the town. Yeah, it's, be proactive, take a look at the town. Because a lot of these things, when they say resolve, reported concern, the issue was resolved. It was resolved for that moment, but it's ongoing. It keeps, and a lot of times the same places. Everything keeps reoccurring. But I'd like to know about the tipping fees, if they went up or anything. And how was this issue with these disrespectful contractors that whoever hired to come to this town and probably every other town to throw their crap all over the streets?
Okay, well, usually when you have utility companies or Optimum, Line, Georgia Central Power and Light, they usually set up a meeting with the township, with the representatives of the township. Now, I wasn't the mayor, because this doesn't just happen within the first month.
I reported with Mayor Soriano.
No, I'm not talking, yeah, okay, I'm just saying, that's what happens. They tell you what they're going to do, what days they're going to be there, they give you the streets they're working on, they actually give you a list of all the streets. I don't have that list. I'll get that list. With regards to tipping fees, we'll get you those numbers. And the other thing is, we'll talk to the recycling coordinator, and we'll, you can compare each year from the tonnage reports from, that you get from your MUA, which would be the Morris County MUA, and they will compile, and then you have to do your recycling report. When you do the recycling report, that's how you get your tonnage grant. So if our tonnage stays a certain level and stuff like that, you get your grant. So I don't have those numbers yet. They usually won't come out until April, because you have to, I do the reports, I've done them before. So that's when I'll know, when I can give you the exact numbers of tipping fees, exact number of recycling, if it's increased or decreased over the year. So I don't know when the recycling reports do here.
Yeah, there's no hurry.
I know when I was a business administrator in the other towns, I did all the reports, and they would do by a certain time. But because of COVID, everything was extended out, so.
And Mayor Soriano, my, well, I say, you know what made this contractor thing tossing their trash all over? They were actually being escorted in the presence of police officers. Now, are they in La La Land? Don't they notice that this is going on, like?
Well, I...
That's what I mean, it's become such a norm that debris that's out there, it's like nobody cares anymore, and that's, it's just a...
Well, the thing with that, and I'll speak to the chief about it, and I'll have the business side speak to the chief. But if you notice, there wasn't a lot of Parsippany police officers manning it. It was out-of-town police officers, it was state police officers that were manning it. But I can get you those numbers. Now, with regards to giving me a jeep, I appreciate it, but I don't need to have one. That being said, and I'll tell you this, if you don't know me by now, I do go out, I go around the town, I go at night, I go at one in the morning sometimes. I can't take it for a ride because it's a township vehicle. But that being said, certain things, I get where you're coming from, Nick. Parsippany's a great town, we want to keep it clean, and I'm committed to that.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Nick, if I just may add, in defense of the officers, their primary function there is traffic control and the safety of people in the traffic. And if you notice, they're at each end of where the work is done. So you may have, the guys are working, let's say, in the middle, the officers are on each end, directing traffic, right? So they're not, they're not in right up against where those guys are doing the work. And if they are throwing things like that, the officers are on each end. And again, their concern is traffic and the safety of pedestrians and motor vehicles, so.
I noticed right away, and it told tale, was where's the bucket? Because when you get debris like that, you put it in the bucket. So it took me like one minute to realize.
Right. Oh, yeah, I mean, I totally understand.
Throwing it in the street.
Right. I got you.
All right.
Mayor, Mr. Homiak had a good point. Maybe we should revisit our discussions with the Optimum contractors and require that they not just throw the debris in the street.
Yeah, we'll do that. Also, since I put those little wires up, my coverage is actually worse. I get no Wi-Fi at night.
Good evening. My name is Davy Wellens, H Jamaica Road. Honored to just say hello to the new council members. Congratulations to both of you. I've been in front of this council before in many capacities. But thing I say, I've been living in town fifty years. Very proud to be a Parsippany resident. You all have a lot to be proud of for everything we have going in this town. Our water utilities, everything going. I've been involved in two of the most fantastic places, I think, number one, Craft and Pirates Foundation, and the other, the Knoll Utility. And I'm just happy that after being on the Advisory Council for a number of years, and having the lack of information available to us as Advisory Council people on the Golf Committee, okay, and as a member of the community for so long, there was times that there was a little smoke and mirrors and a little deception opportunities going on with what was going on with that utility. I'm happy to hear with your support and with the new Director of Golf, those things are going away. And that should be a good feeling and given us a lot of reason for additional pride. And from a standpoint of that facility, I think, if you don't know, it's ranked as one of the top golf courses in the state every year. And with the new greens creepers and everything, and the management going on, it's a pleasure to play, all right? So it is a treasure, something you used to be proud of, were proud of. And I would just ask that all the council members and all the township employees echo and chirp how great it is and how proud they are to be part of it and not do any backbiting and such and gushing on some of the stuff going on. If we have questions, let's get them out there and keep it transparent, so we don't have any more of that, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Davy.
I will sign the paper after I speak. Marilyn Marion, Twelve Winding Way in Parsippany, and I'm here again on the cat issue. And I think, thank you, Mayor, for bringing it up, but I have, I need some clarity on something. Six months ago, when I came before you, the then Township Attorney said that a committee was going to be formed. Mr. DePiero, you were in charge of the committee. You even asked one of the outgoing council members, Janice, to be on that committee. Now, tonight, I, just need clarity on this, you said something about, this is a town thing and it can't be changed. Were you stringing me along for six months? That's the way it seemed to me. Because there is a section in that ordinance that does say you could file a nuisance complaint, and you pushed that nuisance complaint on the municipal court, not on this council. So I filed through municipal court, and so far I have been in court four times over this issue. Again, on Thursday at ten o'clock, I will be in court again with Judge Scalia to talk about a fine for these people. Now, the judge said, and I don't know if he did or not, I'm going to find this out Thursday morning, he was going to speak to these people that are feeding the cats because he wants them done with. He was, well, he did speak with them, excuse me, he was going to speak to animal control because he feels it's animal control's position to clean up the mess that's there. Because they allowed this to happen. The person, the officer, according to the ordinance, was supposed to be checking on that colony of cats and giving some sort of a report. Did anybody ever go back and check to see if she went there? Did any council member who's trying to help me do this? No, I got no help. So what is the clarity? Could the ordinance be changed? The one about going to the municipal court to file something like I mentioned before? It was like putting a restraining order against somebody. It was embarrassing, I said that before. It's still embarrassing. I had no intention of standing here and talking again tonight because I am in the court with this now. But after you said about, we can't change it, explain to me what you meant. I just don't understand it.
TVNR is a long-term process. If we're going to do something else, then we have to have a different process, not TVNR.
Well, absolutely. But that's what you said a committee was going to be formed for. I understand that, it's a process. The process in your ordinance says there is a nuisance complaint there. And this is what you do with the nuisance complaint. And this is what we did, because I wasn't getting help from anybody here. Wasn't getting help from here, from animal control. Judge Scalia could not believe that you people have not helped me. He said to them, why did you come here? Why are you in court over this? This is your township's problem. We said, we've been to the township over and over again. Well, where's their animal control? I don't know. Now, you are going to meet with the past Township Attorney? You could ask him, he's the one that brought it up. Let's change the ordinance. It's only one thing that should be changed, is the nuisance section that I told you before. It's ninety-one dash thirty-four. That's how you file a nuisance complaint, and that should be changed. Otherwise, they end up like a person like me who has to go to court, which I said before, is totally embarrassing to me to bring these neighbors to court, but I can't put up with what's going on with these cats. I don't even know where they are now. Every, you could still see them, there's cat prints all over, and what else now? Because of the snow, we can't tell. But the judge said, told these people to stop feeding them. Stop feeding them. They're not going to die. They're feral cats, they're scavengers. These are the words out of Judge Scalia. They're not going to die, they're scavengers, he said. They will find someplace else. They will, maybe they will, I don't know. I don't care where they go, long as they're not in my neighborhood anymore. So your idea is, it's a town ordinance, it's the law of the town. But why did you lead us on that a committee was going to be formed and changed? That's my, that's my whole question. No clarity, no clarity. We were being strung along, and I think that's embarrassing. We were being strung along, and I think that's embarrassing, and you should be embarrassed over it, being as embarrassed as I am, because you actually said it at this meeting. You actually said you were going to change that. Yes, it needed to be changed. Am I wrong in that? Am I wrong in saying that?
Well, I said we would form a committee and look at it.
Oh, no, the words were things had to be changed.
I'm still opposed to euphemizing cats. If we catch them, we've got to do something with them.
Yes, I agree. I'm not disagreeing with that, but you shouldn't have them in residential areas where cats are roaming all over, pooping all over everybody's lawn, you can't even cut your grass. And how did it go when it was first there? There were 10 cats, I understand. I didn't even know there was a colony, two doors from me, I didn't even know that, until it kept multiplying and multiplying and multiplying, got up to 42 cats. I don't know what it is now. You know what it's like having 42 cats all over the place?
According to Heidi, it's nine cats.
Heidi said in front of Mayor Soriano in his office in the beginning of July, because I had no idea how many cats there, he said to her, how many cats is she talking about? Because he was not happy that I went to him first, because I didn't want to come before, I didn't want to make a big deal out of it. Went to him first, I need your help. He says, how many cats are there? She put her head down because she didn't want to answer, she looked up and she said, 42. In his office, she said that. That's how I know, that's where the figure 42 came from. That, not for me, I didn't go count the cats, that's all I knew, is there were an awful lot of cats around. So now you're still saying, can't be changed, can't be changed. So that's what you did, you strung us along, and I'm really upset about that. And I hope, Mayor, that we could do something about it. The judge, I'm, like I said, it's in the court's hands, actually. I will inform you as to what happens at our court hearing on Thursday, and the judge did say, and I don't know if he could do this, that he was going to tell the animal control that they have to clean that up because it was their responsibility by having these people as caregivers. Is that right? I don't know, that's coming from a judge, would I know about it? So I, I just, I think it's totally unbelievable that I had to hear that, and it doesn't, doesn't make me think very highly of what's going on when I hear some of the stuff sitting here in this town. And all of you who've known me for a long time, I have been a volunteer working in this town for 34 years. I, we support children in the school with scholarships and whatever, and you know that. I don't stand and I don't complain, I think it's wonderful when I see people like yourself who give of your time to help a town. But darn it, help it, help the residents who can't do it themselves. That's, that's my feeling. So now I know where that stands, and I'm sorry that it came to that, but that doesn't make me be very trustworthy of some of the people on the council.
Good evening. So tonight, here's a record, this is the third time I've been in front of this council in 32 years, so you have to be honored. I'm, I'm here on behalf of the Economic Development.
We need your name.
Frank Cahill, 588 Lake Shore Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. I'm requesting that the council review the current ordinance, which you're getting a copy of. There are five words in there that need to be changed. I'm requesting that it be changed to allow members of the business community to be potential members. Currently, it states that you are required to be resident of Precipiny. Since Precipiny has many Fortune 500 companies and many real estate investment companies, it would be great to have input from these professional people. Also, keeping in mind that you have to appoint the people before they become members of this committee, but I request that change be made. Thank you.
Who's going to appoint the members?
The council or the mayor always appoints them.
Right, so what, you want, you want to change that?
No, I want to just make it that we can have business people that don't have to be residents.
Well, I understood that, yeah, they.
That's all.
Uh, business people who have businesses in the township.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we, we discussed this, and I, I agree with Mr. Cahill with regards to that. We really should really run our, our committee like Hannah of a Township does, and I, you know, I met with them prior and I spoke to Mr. Cahill about it, because we are the largest corp, third largest corporate center in the state of New Jersey, and just due to COVID and all the things that have happened in the past, we got to find ways to bring businesses back in. We have some ideas, but I think if we put professional, those individuals that are even realtors, commercial realtors, on the committee, that we can make it enhanced our success, successibility more.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask for an increase in funding for the committee as well.
Well, that would, that would help, thank you very much. Mr. Leary, how difficult will this be?
Not difficult at all. All right. Just be an ordinance that, with that change, and then what we do is just show the, I'll show the addition in the ordinance so it's clear to see, and, you know, we can have that ready for you.
Do we want to classify the types of members? Because you're saying business members. Do we want to classify, like, you know, two shall be from businesses within Precipiny, three shall be township residents? Do, do we want to do that? This way, it's not just, it doesn't become all businesses? I'm just.
No.
No?
No. This is, this should be a simple change. Members shall be township residents or, or township businesses, owners of township businesses.
Okay, done.
That's all. Here are three words, and you're done.
Yeah, I just jotted down.
I won't even charge you, Mr. Leary.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I make a motion that we close public hearings.
Motion made by Ms. Graniani, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Okay, the only other item we have on the agenda, you can review the second readings and the ordinances, we have on the last page, approval of payroll and bills list, Mrs. Graniani.
CFO Juan Uribe recommends authorization for payment. One, authorized payment of the 2422 regular payroll estimated at $1,750,000. Two, payment of bills from voucher list 2122 through 2322 estimate totaling $717,475. Motion to approve by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Graniani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the ultimate motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
The motion to adjourn by Ms. Graniani, the motion to adjourn by Ms. Graniani, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.